Tuesday, August 19th, we're closed session, 5:15 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Bridge?
Not here.
Mayor Protem Victor Vega?
Here.
Mayor James Mosby?
Present.
Oral communication. Anybody want to come? Nobody wants to come? We're closed oral communications. We're getting ready for a closed session. We have three business items. Public employment performance evaluation, city manager. Public employment title, city manager. And conference with Labor Negotiator Agency, doesn't represent it is Jeff Malawi, city attorney for an upper presented employee, city manager. He's, aren't you representing if he's unrepresented? Then he would be represented. All right, very good. And we'll be back for regular council meeting. Open session at 6:30, all goes well. How you doing, Jim?
I'm good, I'm really good.
Ladies, welcome back. August 19th, 2025, council meeting. Back from open, closed session, back to open session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Councilmember Bridge?
Present.
Mayor Protem Victor Vega?
Here.
Mayor James Mosby?
Present.
Mr. City Attorney, do we have anything from closed session to report?
Mayor and council, city council met in closed session to discuss the three employment-related items on the closed session agenda. The council gave direction to staff and held the performance evaluation, but no reportable action was taken.
Very good. All right, please join me with invocation of Pastor Brian Altman is here, and shortly after that, the Pledge of Allegiance. Gracious and loving God, we pause at the beginning of this meeting to seek your presence and your guidance. Thank you for the gift of this city, for the beauty of our valley, and for the diverse people who call Long Poak home. Tonight, we ask for wisdom for our council members, for the staff, and for all those who serve. Grant them clarity of thought, courage of conviction, and compassion in their decisions. May the choices made here reflect what is best for the heart of our community. Helping Long Poak shine as a place of hope, a place of opportunity, and a place of belonging. We also take time to lift up those who protect and serve, our first responders, law enforcement, firefighters, and medical teams. Surround them with safety, strength, and peace as they daily place themselves in harm's way for the sake of others. Guide us all to be neighbors who look out for one another, leaders who serve with humility, and citizens who join together for the good of our city. May every word spoken and every action taken tonight move us closer to justice, unity, and a brighter future for all who call Long Poak home. It is in your name we pray. Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It says presentations, but I guess we don't have any presentations in that category yet. Roll right to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let everybody know that we'll be closing the Aquatic Center for Maintenance and Upkeep. That'll be, let me see, back on Tuesday, the September 2nd, starting now. I also wanted to thank the Aquatic Center and Parks and Rec for the extended hours they did over the summer. That was nice to have available. The Fall 2025 Parks and Rec Activity Guide is out. You can get it online or go by the Anderson Rec Center. There's still some grants they're going to give through the CEB grant program for kids under 18, up to $100, and seniors over 60 for activities, so you can check that out. Wanted to thank the Solid Waste Division. They did the free compost and mulch, and this event they did last week was very successful compared to the spring one, so it's good to see that people are taking advantage of that. Also want to take a moment and thank the Fire Division, their strike team that went out. We sent out brush truck 351 with a crew led by Battalion Chief Cody Lee, and I wanted to thank him for the gift of fire. I know they went out August 1st, and they just got back August 15th. Yeah, so I wanted to thank them for going out and doing that. Just want to remind everybody that Labor Day will be closed. That'll be Monday, September 1st. City Hall, Long Poak Library, Solid Waste Landfill, Aquatic Center, and Parks and Rec indoors will be closed. Also, with the holiday, the trash and recycling and green waste will be delayed by one day, so be prepared. And I got a little one that I wanted to make the council and community aware. I know it's kind of hard to see this one, but one of the things that was passed was SB 121, 1221, and it's potential of scaling back on natural gas and going to electrification. If you can see the map there, it's the south side of town, but, you know, I wanted people to get, know that this might happen, and then make their voice heard, and go to the SoCal webpage and give your input. But I wanted everybody to be aware that that might happen, so. And that's all I have for today.
Any questions for the city manager?
Yeah, I have a question.
Councilmember Bridge?
Dean, I just want to be clear. That decarbonization that you put in there on the screen, essentially that means that the gas will not be provided to that neighborhood once they make the conversion to electric.
I think when I read through, I know you guys read through some of that too there. What they're proposing is they're going to buy everybody electrical appliances to replace the gas ones, and they're going to no longer provide those services in the areas that hold older pipelines, so, yes, you're right.
So, any area that was on that map shaded, if this is successful, will no longer have gas.
Yeah, that's correct. Thank you for that clarity, Dean.
Question for you. I know we have a, like a franchise agreement with the gas companies. Would they be in violation of that agreement?
Yeah, it does say they're going to maintain it. I mean, it's something that, I have it available if somebody wanted to read through it. There's three agreements. It used to be called the Santa Maria Gas Company, and then it went to the South County Gas Company, and now SoCal Gas. But, yeah, we do have those agreements, and I'm not sure they're in violation. It might be something, you know, for the attorneys to look at. Yeah.
So, I'm going to take mayor's privilege and make a request that you bring this item back, if I can get two other people along with me. It's a significant portion of this town, and the people I talk to, they have no idea what's coming at them.
Yeah.
And if they think getting electrified is all great, and when they get that first bill, they're really going to be electrified.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think maybe we should dig into it deeper than just that. I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, but I think it needs to be come back with full review by city attorney as well. If I could get two other people to go along with me with that? And Councilmember Starbuck, Councilmember Bridge? All right, I think you got three to bring that back as a full item, I think. I think it would behoove us as well to maybe notice those people who are, well, actually the whole damn town's going to be affected by it, because if they creep on this, it's going to be creep on more. And you think a hot shot is expensive now, wait, you get electric water heater, et cetera, et cetera.
Sounds good.
All right, let alone the infrastructure, maybe you could also diagram a little bit on the potential infrastructure build out it's going to cost if we have to do that. Somebody's got to pay for it.
Yeah. There'd be some upgrades to our infrastructure, for electric infrastructure, transformers, heavier wires. I mean, it's not a cheap load. I mean, to do the whole city, we've done some study, or I've seen some studies, that they're talking for a city like Long Poak, probably $150 million to upgrade the infrastructure to handle the capacity that they're talking about, decarbonization and electrification. I don't know how much it'd be for that one zone, but it's going to, it's going to cost a lot of money.
I think significant, I think the public needs to understand that this is a potential, and maybe they all want to support it and bring out their gold cards and stuff, but I mean, anyhow, okay, thank you for that.
They should know, thank you.
Any other questions on that? Anything? We good? Want to move on? Okay, we have a consent calendar coming up. Any public comments on consent calendar? We have six items on consent calendar, yes.
Just, just for, out of an abundance of caution, I need to recuse myself from item three. Did a small amount of work with the school district, so I need to recuse from that.
From the SRO?
Because I did some work for the school district.
Is it? I mean, if that's your recommendation.
Yeah, Councilmember Ball let me know that he has some income in the past 12 months from the Long Poak Unified School District, and so he's going to recuse himself as in a precautionary measure.
All right, all right, so, let's see, we have, first one is approval of minutes of May 20th, 2025, and then approval of ratification for expenditures. Payroll, July 18th, 2.1 million. Voucher registered July 14th through 18th, 3.2 million. Voucher registered July 22nd through 25th, 270,000. Voucher registered July 22nd through 25th, 5.5 million. They advised along in that 5.5 million, we had a big payment for the wastewater plant bond, right? Annual payment?
Yeah, it's about 4.6 million or so, the SRF loan.
Very good. And then number three is the approval of independent contractor service agreement of Long Poak Unified School District for school resource officer program. Number four, adoption of Resolution 6769, Princey 25, approving and authorizing the city manager or designated to execute a third phase agreement for energy storage service agreement for Trolley Pass Project LLC. Number five, annual compliance report pursuant to subrecipient financial programmatic and monitoring report requirement policy. That's report 712024 to 6302025. And number six, adoption of Resolution 6770, Princey 25, approving the revision and update of sewer system management plan. I figure that's why everybody's here tonight, right? As prescribed by the State Water Resource Control Board, order number 2022-0103-DWQ. You may have a comment, public comment on that. Nobody's rising for public comment on that? We have a close public comment on consent calendar and bring it back to council. Does anybody want to pull any of these items? Councilmember Bridge?
I don't really want to pull. I would like clarification. Item five, is that related to our upcoming review of revised Chapter 45? Is that the same, same?
Well, this, item number five is the annual report that the city has to do under Chapter 45 policy. Separately, the city council has directed staff to look into whether we can modify or even eliminate Chapter 45, and I have an item coming back to the council fairly soon.
So, it's the whole Chapter 45, or just the one relating to this compliance report?
One of the options the council wanted us to look into was the complete elimination of the Chapter 45 policy about subrecipient monitoring and compliance.
Okay. Well, my only request is if we could get a date on this upcoming item that relates to that, maybe December or something, so we can get it off the list. So, otherwise, I have no comment.
Anybody else? I had a couple of questions. I noticed that some of these, are they time-sensitive? We have the Chief Martin, that was a July contract, we're still good with that?
Yes, it's encompassing, so we're good.
Okay. And then I noticed, I got a question. Well, maybe I'm going to pull item number four, because I think it's, it's very open, and it could be a multimillion dollar project. We're not sure exactly what that is. But I had a question on number, number six. And that's the sewer system management plan. Who wants to take that? Mr. Luther? On page 3- or 11-2, it says that the, you would review this by the Utility Commission. Was this plan run by the Utility Commission at all?
The revised plan was not.
It wasn't run by them, but, because just, you know, in the book, you do say that it did do it. The other thing is, on this plan, were there any noticeable changes? There was no red line on the document. Are we just pretty much using the same document that we used before? With just some date changes?
Talks about the changes that were made on page two and three. They were minor changes.
Okay. The other thing is, this was also a time-sensitive document, it referenced August 2nd. As finalization, are we okay with that? We're not in violation?
We are not in violation, according to the the manager. I talked to him this afternoon.
We're good? Okay. So, would we reference on the front of the document? Says fifth revision was July 2025? Do we need to change that to August of 2025? Anybody? Is it?
Well, that's when it was, that's when it was revised, was July? I mean, you're going to adopt it tonight.
The way I read it, it's not revised until it's approved by the council, then it's finalized through the revision, but if it's, if the city attorneys are going, okay with that, then I'm okay with it.
I think it's fine either way.
Okay. I know the Utility Commission meeting was canceled this last, this month, because there's nothing to discuss, but this would have been probably a good item to discuss with them, especially since she did reference, or whoever did reference in the book, that it was reviewed by the Utility Commission. So, I won't ask that to be pulled with other than that. There's no increase of any financial obligations by doing this? I know there was anticipated increased labor sites, the capital improvement plans that are in here? There's no other?
No, there's no significant changes to the document from previous requirements.
Okay, very good. Other than that, I would look for a motion to approve consent calendar except for item number four.
I make that motion.
Push the button.
I make that motion.
Councilmember Bridge, seconded by Councilmember Vega. Let's go ahead and vote.
And with Councilmember Ball's vote, he's just going to be recusing himself from item three. He can stay on the dais, because it's the consent calendar.
Okay. Got that? All right, go ahead and vote. It passes 5-0 with Councilmember Ball recusing himself, item number three. Now, I'll go down to a staff presentation. City Planning Staff have provided a presentation of recent updates to California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. It appears that they, when they don't want to, they'll just throw it out, though, right? All right? CEQA, when, go ahead, lift that, the podium. You can elevate it.
Repeat question?
It appears when they want to, they throw CEQA out. I mean, as an example, the homeless shelter, they didn't have to go through CEQA to modify and put a million dollar sewer system in, in their septic system, next to the city of Long Poak's largest water well. CEQA was avoided. I don't understand, but I mean, anyhow, welcome.
Thank you.
Planning Manager, Mr. Stones?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So, tonight I'll just do a brief, brief presentation on some of the CEQA changes that were done recently. So, a little background, on June 30th, 25, Governor Newsom approved and signed the state budget. Attached to the budget was Assembly Bill AB 130 and Senate Bill SP 131. The goal of these bills is to streamline the California Environmental Quality Act, review process for specific housing development projects, and other smaller projects. So, on the changes for AB 130, they include housing projects can only have five public hearings, requires streamlined processing for housing projects, qualifying projects approved within 60 days. When housing projects are submitted, it locks in ordinance as standards in place at the time. AB 130 establishes statewide vehicle miles traveled mitigation bank that allows developer to satisfy transportation-related CEQA mitigation requirements by paying fees. The new exceptions also include the project site is no larger than 20 acres, or no more than five acres if it qualifies for builder's remedy site. Located within the boundaries of the city urban area, the product site has developed or surrounded by development, at least, at least 75% of the project site is surrounded by development. Do not require demolition of historic structures, meets tribal consultation, does not include transient lodging, and at least two-thirds of the project square footage is dedicated to residential use. And then some things, the project cannot be located in areas of coastal zone, prime farmland, wetlands, high fire, very high fire hazard zones, hazardous waste sites, flood districts, or sites with endangered species. The CEQA changes for SP 131 include, they added a whole new list of projects exempt from CEQA. Some of these include agriculture, employee housing, certain public park and trail projects, daycare centers, rural health clinics, advanced medical, advanced manufacturing facilities, and facilities supporting high-speed trail, rail. Jurisdictions should avoid near miss review when considering environmental impacts. So, if a project, housing development project would otherwise be exempt from CEQA pursuant to a statutory exemption or a Class 32 exemption, which is an infill type project, then the, and it's only, doesn't, misses out on just one of those items, then the review should be just for that item. So, for example, if you, let's say it's an infill Class 32 project, and there are certain criteria in the Class 32 that needs to meet, let's just say it just doesn't meet traffic. It meets everything else except for traffic, then you would just focus in on the review for, or the environmental review for the traffic portion of it. One project, looking at our development project list, that could potentially apply for this, is the project on 1600 East Ocean. It's that 10-acre vacant site across the street from Home Depot. It's proposed for 256 rent, rental housing unit development project. However, this project, right now, only had a initial review through what we call a pre-application process. So, for us to really determine if it even qualifies for this, they still need to actually apply for design review. Right now, it's just a pre-application. No design review has actually been submitted to the city for review. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Any questions? They'll dwell on it. They'll come see you tomorrow. I will anyways.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oral communications. Now, your time for three minutes, oral communications.
Hello, good evening, everyone.
Go ahead and pull that microphone down towards you a little bit more.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I first want to say thank you for giving me the chance to speak, and I'm a Long Poak resident, and I'm applying for a cottage food home use permit, and I've already been approved by Santa Barbara County under AB 1616, the California Homemade Food Act. The county provided that approval in writing, but because they no longer issue registration numbers, the city has refused to accept my application until staff can confirm my health application's approval with the county. That's left me waiting more than two and a half weeks with no clear timeline, and from what I understand, state law requires county health approval, which I already have, but it does not require a registration number if the county isn't issuing one. In other words, I've met the legal requirement, but I'm unable to even submit my application at the city level. So, the delay hasn't just created frustration, it directly prevents me and others like me from operating legally, earning income, and contributing to our local economy. And for a small business, every week of waiting means lost revenue and missed opportunities. And I want to be clear that I'm not asking the city to skip its verification. What I'm respectfully requesting is that the city allow applicants like myself to submit and receive provisional approval, subject to county confirmation behind the scenes. This would protect the city's process while also protecting residents from being left in limbo after meeting state and county requirements. And I just want to ask respectfully that the council review this practice so that small businesses are not stalled indefinitely by administrative gaps, and so that Long Poak entrepreneurs can move forward and provide value to the community. Thank you.
Did you fill out a yellow card that's got your name and number on it?
No.
You might want to do that, if you wouldn't give that to Stacy, please.
Okay, thank you.
Here's something you could do, what you just had there, if you had copies of it to, to give to the council.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Copies of what you just read.
Oh.
Even if you don't have it right now, if you could drop them off tomorrow?
I will.
The front desk there, so we can see, so we can investigate deeper, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Oral communications, three minutes. With that, we will close oral communications. Appointments, doesn't think of voting delegate and alternate for League of California City's annual conference. I can see everybody's clamoring for that one. Aren't you the lead, the voting member right now, the city manager?
Yeah, I'll be there if you, and do the vote.
And who else is going to be there?
Senator Bridge.
Senator Bridge, he said no. Victor? Victor said no. Councilmember Starbuck? You've been up here as long, longer than anybody. Should be in, all right. Do we need an alternate right now? You're going to be there, right? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Do we need to make a motion to appoint you? Are you already appointed?
I think I'm good. I don't know if they can vote formally.
We need to have a motion to appoint.
All right, I give it a, make a motion to appoint, Dean Albros, our voting delegate.
Second.
And seconded by Bridge, go ahead and vote. You can vote. First, the pretty colors. Passes 5-0. We didn't have to have an alternate, correct? We can count on you.
Just, just one.
You already got your plane ticket, though, right?
No, I'm just going to drive down for the night.
Deal. Chewing through this fast. Council requests, Lori Temora, contract planner, Bajer Meadows, come on down. Been around long enough, we'd almost put a museum on that property, right? Would it be considered historical? Then we can, let me get through some of that CEQA stuff, right? Amazing.
Good evening, Lori Temora, contract planner for the city of Long Poak. Bringing forward tonight a brief presentation on the Bajer Meadows project. This item has been discussed on several occasions with the city council, so we've put the materials together to explain the history and where they are in the process with the county of Santa Barbara. So, we'll talk about the SB 330 review by the county. We have also included in our package the city comment letter that identified the provision for water and sewer to the project, and, and some other materials are in your packet. So, go ahead. So, in 2023, the city of Long Poak submitted an application to adjust the sphere of influence line for a number of properties on the west side. That went through a number of hearings with LAVCO and ultimately was denied in April of '23. Subsequent to that was, and concurrently were the housing element up- Subsequent to that was, and concurrently were the housing element updates throughout both the city of Lompoc and the countywide process. And so the applicant submitted a builder's remedy application for a portion of what was identified as the annexation area. So next slide. The property is about 50 acres. It kind of fills in the donut hole, surrounded by the residential development around the property. Ocean is the northern boundary, V, and then the area down below that. And so that application has been going through the city, the county process now for just shy of two years now, almost. And there's incremental steps within SB 330 that talk about your initial application being accepted by the jurisdiction, then additional information is provided, that gets reviewed, then acknowledgement of accepting the application, and then going through a consistency review by the county. So the applicant has gone through these steps. Each one of those steps are outlined in the staff report. And so there's been progress made on the processing of the SB 330 application. There is an additional step now that the applicant is going to be responding back to county comments. And if the county accepts their responses, it'll trigger the environmental review process for this project. They'll ultimately go through an EIR, which we anticipate will be about a year, if you can go to the next slide. The project itself is 200 single-family lots and 140 apartment units and infrastructure within the project, some open space areas. The project has access in this south road and then V Street. And go to the next slide. The city did provide a letter to the applicant in regards to providing services to the project with the proviso that it either go through an outside agency service agreement or annexation. Those are the terms of the letter. And so as this project goes through the environmental review and EIR, those two terms will be analyzed in that analysis. So the project has been called complete for processing. The county has provided the applicant with a consistency letter. Applicant is working towards refiling in September or soon. And that will start the EIR process, which we anticipate will be about a year. And the city of Lompoc is a responsible agency for this project and will continue to review documents, provide comments, and with the ultimate goal is annexation of this project to the city of Lompoc. I think one of the pieces of information that we provided in the staff report was the Bailey Corridor specific plan that was submitted to the city in 2007. It takes up all of the property, which is about 270 acres, along Bailey Avenue, all of the land that is not developed at this time. And that project went through about two years of review. And of course, that was during the recession and there were some conversations with some of the landowners in that area, and ultimately, the application was withdrawn. It did not go through the environmental review process. It went through a number of different steps, but did not complete that step. So we wanted to give you an illustration of what had been provided to the city at that time, but no further progress has been made. So what we're doing is providing the information for you tonight. The applicant and their representatives are here, and they would like to make a short presentation. And it will be available for any questions.
You want to take questions now or after the presentation?
I think it may be appropriate to have their presentation, and then we'll be available for comments.
Very good.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening. I'm Ginger Anderson with Brownstein. I'm here tonight with Jack Bodge, the property owner, and Jim Slot with Granite Peak, the developer. We're excited about this project, and we appreciate your time tonight to learn more about it, to share some details. As Lori noted, it's been a long time coming. This time around, I think it's fair to say we needed to take a different tack. And hopefully, the different approach will result in a win-win for the city and the county. As Lori noted, the timing of this SB 330 preliminary application was important to get protections of the Housing Accountability Act, including the builder's remedy. And on top of that, layered on top of that is state density bonus law. So there's a kind of a grouping of state laws in play here. The current application covers just over half of the 100-acre site. Can I get to the next slide? Ah, there we go. And the detention basin is the green square, and that's moved around throughout the submittals, so that's the current location for it. And I've added some dimensions here from the first residential use to the edge of the proposed project, as well as the edge of the detention basin, and then further to Bailey Avenue, which is the city's urban limit line here to just show some separation between the ag and the residential. One of the big stumbling blocks for the project in the past has been the conversion of agricultural lands, so it is.
Speak a little closer.
Sure. So one of the stumbling. Does it lift? How does that work? Oh my god, blast off. Okay. So, let's see. The loss of agriculture had been a stumbling block for this project in the past. So this iteration, a good majority of the agriculture on the west part is going to be remaining in agriculture. The project proposes two residential components. The single-family component is 200 dwellings ranging from over 2,000 square feet to over 3,000 square feet on lots between 6,700 and 8,300 square feet. There are eight different styles with their reverses that will vary the streetscape. There are 15 color schemes, 16 floor plans. These are four and five bedrooms, one and two-story dwelling options, and the heights will vary between 19 and a half and 27 and a half feet to offer options for a variety of housing family units. Architecture is a blend of ranch and craftsman with porches and features, with the layouts flexible for, again, those variety of family types. The multifamily component includes 140 units in four buildings, 39 feet in height, and each building has 35 units. The project has 20% affordable, which means two of those multifamily buildings will be deed restricted to lower-income families. In total, there are, in those buildings, 24 studios, 44 one-bedroom, 48 two-bedrooms, and 24 three-bedroom units with 318 parking spaces. The, oh, and there's your elevation. The onsite community and open spaces include a central pedestrian path and two interior park areas, two open space areas on the northwest and southwest corners, and amenities located directly outside of those multifamily buildings. And then we'll zoom in on those three that I've boxed out there in the next slide. So this is one of the, one half of the central park. It's mirrored on the other side of that central, center street. It will have a barbecue and trellis area, open lawn, shade trees, and landscaping. The revert, the opposite side, its mirror will have a top lot with plate equipment. Next slide. This shows illustrative of an area right outside of one of the multifamily buildings with a pool, barbecue area, half-court basketballs, and lawn areas. Then going to the northwest edge, the plan is to retain existing sycamore trees that line both sides of Ocean, install a perimeter wall with varied depth from the property line and some planting on that edge. There's an offer to dedicate located in this corner, which would be offered to the city, which would allow for pedestrian connection at some point in the future. And there's room here for public art or an entry feature of some kind for the city. Next slide. So the project's entry is on V Street and Olive. It's robust landscaping with a handsome entry on both Olive and V. V Street is going to have 1,700 linear feet of improvements, including a 30-foot wide landscape strip with meandering sidewalk, eight-inch cla, uh, sorry, eight-foot wide class-two bike lane, and a crosswalk across V to connect the project to the existing class-one bike lane that occurs on the east side of V Street. The project will also be installing a four-way traffic signal at V and Ocean, where there's presently a four-way stop sign. The project's south frontage on Olive will have 1,500 linear feet of eight-foot parkway, five-foot sidewalk, and six-foot bike lane. There's both a pedestrian and a car connection down at Olive. Next slide. And the project is placing residential nearer school, which is where we would logically want to put it, I suppose. This corner here would improve, the project would improve safety here by its installation of frontage improvements along the entirety of the V Street frontage and Olive frontage, with an addition of a pedestrian connection to the west. On the west side of V, currently off to the left of this picture is a bus stop and two crosswalks across Olive on either side of South U Street. So we're adding another safe connection there. Next slide. So as Lori said, there were a number of steps with the county thus far that had to meet certain timelines. We were focused on preserving our rights under the SB 330 application. Lompoc was given some middle, copies of each of these submittals and provided comment letters to each, which we appreciate. And we will be resubmitting, hopefully next month, to the county, which the city will also get a copy. The next slide. The green arrows, these two things are meant to happen in tandem, as are the two yellow items. So once we submit to the county, and assuming, again, like Lori said, the, they accept the consistency response, we would also be submitting to Lompoc for a pre-zone application, which is the first step for Lompoc's involvement. And performing SEQA review, which unfortunately, all of those great new SEQA exemptions and state laws are not as useful to this project on first glance. So we think they'll be tearing off the housing element, the county's housing element, EIR, for the SEQA document. Hence, about a year, hopefully less, depending on how much they can tear off of that previous analysis. And then these yellow arrows, the county decision would be late '26, 2026. At the same time, Lompoc would be considering their pre-zone application and a resolution to initiate an annexation with LAFCO. So neither of those actions in yellow can happen until SEQA is completed, because those actions are a SEQA event. So if the city successfully initiates the pre-zone and annexation, if the county successfully approves the project, then we would be submitting to LAFCO, who would act last. They would not be able to take any action on the annexation without a completed SEQA document. So that kind of gives you the brackets of the timeline. And with that, we are available for questions.
So who gets the RENA numbers for this? I kind of know already, but, I mean.
So, that's a really good question. So there are, and I'll of course defer to Jeff's answers here too, but part of the LAFCO decision-making process, and that process itself, is going to be negotiating things like property taxes and share of who, how we pay for services, et cetera. And there is a, there is a path. The county has done this before with the city of Santa Barbara. So there is a legal pathway by which the two agencies can agree to transfer some of their RENA allocation amongst themselves. And there's a, I think, a separate process if they don't agree. But again, now we're getting into parts of the law that I don't know. But it is my understanding that that's part of the negotiation that happens with the LAFCO umbrella.
So, I don't know if you've been watching all the LAFCO meetings, but recently, they had a LAFCO meeting in looking at the county developing in the Galita area. And the willingness of the person to farm the land became more of a priority than the reality that it was prime ag land. And so they said, even though they were setting a precedence, they said they weren't setting a precedence by the overwhelming consideration and need of housing would surpass the qualifications of prime ag land. Is there an opportunity to use such precedent setting that they didn't set down there, but did set, to move with this project?
I would say that's a very layered question. I would say that one of the agricultural parcels that they chose, that the county chose not to include in the housing element is going forward in builder's remedy as well, just as this one is. LAFCO's decisions, I would not really want to speculate, but I would hope that if the county and the city are on the same page, that LAFCO might get there as well.
Review the first 34 minutes of two LAFCO meetings ago, and you'll see the movements they made, but.
Are you talking about the San Marcos growers' project and their annexation to the sanitary district?
If, they're leaving it in the county. It's one of the three major parcels that they're doing down outside of Galita. So it's not a builder's remedy, because it's in within the county itself. The one that was a container farm, a nursery.
Okay.
But the willingness of not to farm, which the Bodgeers have said, hey, we're done farming flower seed. I would say that they line much the same as that facility did down there. The other thing I found interesting, that like the Richards Ranch, where they're going to annex roads in, so the properties became contiguous. Is there an opportunity that we could annex roads in? And then we're actually annexing not a peninsula, but an island into the city and taking the whole piece? Because we have designed right now, you actually increase the interface, you double the interface than if you took the whole property in. Interface with agriculture, because you would have the piece on Olive, and then the piece that you'd be splitting now. Or if you took the whole piece to Bailey, like we anticipated doing, and has been slated since the late 50s, you'd only have one interface, the other side would be a highway on 246. But I noticed they were doing that with Richards Ranch, that they're annexing roads, so they'd be contiguous. Is there ability, we, I'm saying, we have to be a little more creative and outside of the box. I appreciate you guys working hard and forward. And I know you've been working on this for about 20 years directly, which is ridiculous. But it seems like there may be some other opportunities that are opening up, especially now with the push with the RENA numbers being as high as they are, and other areas are being creative and stimulating the building of housing.
Yeah, I would say that LAFCO's decision is still a discretionary decision. I would also add that this, the portion of Ocean north of most of the part that we're developing with residential, so that half, most of that is city. There's a gap there between county and city, and there's Caltrans right away there. I think from our mapping, we understand that V Street is already a city street, rather than a county street. And I would have to look at Olive to see if that's a city street already. But certainly, the extent to which you're annexing would be something that we would want to work with you on to kind of understand the feasibility of it being approved through LAFCO. So I wouldn't want to make decisions that are not, potentially not supportable. But I'd love to, you know, talk about our options there, of how much of the sites being.
The other thing, having that sewer line down in the late 50s, 58, 59, when the Bodge family was actually charged a sewer assessment for the sewer line in itself. I mean, what are the options of moving that to our, I know the urban limit line, which is supposed to be the line in the sand that you make your sphere of influence line, but we didn't follow through with that? But the point of fact is, should our sewer line be inside the sphere of influence line? I mean logically? We, we charge people, and I think those documents are available. They were charged for the sewer assessment. Why aren't we doing what we said, and the county approved it? So maybe there's another argument there that we could strong-arm up a little bit.
Sure.
So a couple of points. First of all, in regards to the sewer line along Bailey Avenue. That is an infrastructure that exists. It's the city's infrastructure, but it's not in the city. There are opportunities to apply for an annexation of that strip of land where the sewer line is located as an independent application to the Bodge or Meadows project. We need authorization to move forward with that type of application. But it would be on the city's dime and time to move that forward to LAFCO. So that is a direction you could have us bring forward to you at a separate meeting and move forward with that type of application. The other comment was in regards to the RENA numbers. This, this project was not included in the county's RENA numbers. So if it is approved, when it's approved, 20% of the units will be identified as affordable. And the issue will be, is it affordable units that are in the city of Lompoc's RENA numbers and credited to the city of Lompoc? Or does the county retain those affordable units? and credited to the city of Longpoke, or does the county retain those affordable units? Again, that is something that can be negotiated through the annexation process. And so that is something that is still on the table.
Couple more questions. I know when the county came up inside the city limits, so in the late 80s, the county came in and took what was then the city of Longpoke's pretty much largest industrial park, and they waved a magic wand and said, you know, we're going to acquire this and we're going to change it to commercial office zoning. And they were able to do it, and they basically told the city, you know, pound sand, we're the county, we can do whatever we want once we acquire. They did the same thing with the office building over here when they converted it without any inquiry to the city. And this one's a little tricky, because they converted it from office to residential, and then they gifted it to a nonprofit. So technically, it was the nonprofit who truly did it, and I think the grant was actually the nonprofit's, not the county's. The reason why I ask is, is there a way that the city, in partnership, because we are partners with the Bodgers in one way, whether it's a lease or an ownership or some, something level like that, where it becomes our jurisdiction, where it really, truly follows under us and our decision? Other than if the city were to buy it, then does it become our jurisdiction and our rules? As is River Park, the city owns River Park, it's outside the city limits, but we kind of tell the county what we're doing. We don't ask, we do it. At what level does that? I mean, it's time to get creative with them, you know, I just think what we're doing here is we're piecemealing it, we've been kicked around, and poor Mr. Bodger's been beat up for decades on this thing. Is there a way that we think outside of the box a little bit? Does a nine-year lease work that way? It appears it works kind of that way for the county on us. Are there avenues like that, that we can look into?
What you propose is a very outside-the-box suggestion.
That's me.
And I think we would need to bring, investigate that and bring it back to you.
I think, because I really do, I think this will be, we know we need the housing. The county will tell us no for everything, except, I mean, they'd put a high-speed train into the middle of town for us to go down there and work in their hotels, we know that. We know they're fully accepting to that, so. I'll let some other guys ask questions, let me get Councilmember Bridge, and then we'll go to Councilmember Ball.
So could you go back the slide, the timeline? Yeah, that slide's good. What is the reason that we cannot do the CEQA, the Longpoke CEQA and the project CEQA at the same time? Why couldn't that be done together?
That is an option, is to run concurrently a process for both the annexation to the city of Longpoke while the application for the SB 330 project is going through the county, so that they queue up in a timely manner.
Well, I feel like we've done a disservice to the project, because I don't believe we're being, not intentionally, but we're unintentionally being disingenuous, because I believe the letter we sent to you is not the present condition of the board. I don't believe we will give an agency agreement, at least I would not be a proponent of it, I can't speak for the rest of the council. We would only approve this if this is an annexed. So I think we should work in partnership and get the CEQA done at the same time, because otherwise, you're going to get to the end of the project, and I guess you're going to put septic tanks in everywhere. And I, you know, I may be exaggerating, and maybe the state will come and step on us, but I don't trust LAFCO, I don't particularly trust the county. You know, they've been trustworthy in cases, other cases I felt abused. So if we leave this to the end, what I see happening is, we'll get to our step, and then everybody go, oh, well, we've decided we're not going to do it. And then we will be stuck servicing this. Stuck's a charge word, and I don't mean to imply that I don't want this project, I do want this project. But I want it in the city, and I think it should be in the city. I think the county has done a disservice to us when they didn't get their general plan done. The reason we didn't get the LAFCO approval is because the implication was we would not be good stewards of the land, and now we are here doing exactly what we begged for the opportunity to do. And I think it's time for the city to stand up, but I'll work, I think the city should work with you, but there has to be some economies of scale in the CEQA. And I think personally, if the CEQA doesn't get done and the annexation doesn't get done, I am going to vote against an inter-service agreement. You'll have to ask the other councilmen how they feel about it. I don't think the letter should have ever gone out that way, because I don't think that's what our city wants. And so, you know, in the spirit of full transparency, that's what I think we should be doing.
Councilmember Ball. Oh, good, go ahead.
Sir, in our coordination with the county planners and the county process, we made it clear that as a responsible agency that will partner with the county in this process because of the water and sewer connections and the infrastructure that is around this property, the Marmel document needs to include the annexation process, and as well as an analysis of the outside users agreement, so that the document upon completion has all of the options outlined, so that not only will the county use that document in their decision-making process, we can use that same document for the annexation, LAFCO can use that same document for their final decisions.
Well, you're showing a separate CEQA statement, are we going to do a separate CEQA or not?
Yeah. Hi, Councilmember Bridge through the mayor. The idea is that we aren't forced to pay for two separate CEQA documents. That's not fair to anyone. So the idea is that the document that is prepared covers the development and the annexation at the same time. So it is the same CEQA document, it is all in one document, as Lori said.
Why are you showing it as two documents?
No, it's just meant to show that that's not the way I meant to do that. What I'm saying is that they both need, that the yellow part, both of those actions need CEQA to be done. And the CEQA document preparation is in the county bucket with the Longpoke being the responsible agency. So that's where we are doing the economy of scale, we're not paying for two separate processes, two separate CEQA documents, et cetera. So it's the same document, and working together with Longpoke as the responsible agency will make sure that, you know, that Longpoke's concerns related to environmental review are covered in that same document, so.
Well, that's wonderful then, and I've communicated to you, I don't think an inter-service agreement or whatever the correct phrase is going to happen. So if we need to go communicate that to the county and to LAFCO, I hate that the letter says we will do either this or that, because I don't think we will, and so...
Councilmember Bridge, if I may interrupt, the letter does not say that the city will do either A or B. The letter says the city will provide service if either A or B happens. It doesn't say anything's going to happen.
I know, but I've talked to people previously, and it's being interpreted as we'll do one or the other. It's not being interpreted, we will only do the annexation, which is what we really mean. So I think we should be genuine and say, it's time for LAFCO to stand up, and if we've got to have a CEQA complete, let's get it complete, but we're only going to accept this if it's annexed. And again, I'll be one vote, but I think I understand the flavor of the community right now. And I will, I'll have a very hard time supporting it, and I want the project, so.
Okay, Councilmember Ball.
So I know this is a complicated topic, and I agree on certain things, I have questions about other things. I think for me, I can't imagine a neighborhood across the street that has some sort of different agreement that pays 1.5X on some utilities and something different here, and then across the street, they are in the city, and you can vote here, but, you know, if you care about your city, you can't vote, it just sounds complicated. So at its surface, I tend to see the benefit of it just being inside the city of Longpoke, generally, but I have some more questions if you wanted to comment on that.
Yeah, just if I may, Councilmember Ball through the mayor. The idea is that we're all paddling in the same direction. The idea is that we'll be annexed. I think that I'm not on LAFCO, and the city doesn't have a majority on LAFCO, and so there is still a decision-maker that I would hope would see it the same way. So I don't think that we can guarantee a result. The point is to get a project approved that can be built, and that the desire would be to be annexed for those reasons, for utilities, et cetera, so.
And again, I'm kind of speaking at a layman's terms level, but I am interested in how the RENA numbers shake out. Again, from my understanding, the county, in its infinite wisdom, absolutely no building on any prime ag land, and then something triggered, this builder's remedy, kind of know how that happened, but it's going to happen. So for me, I'd hate to see that Longpoke, that, you know, averages two houses a year, struggling with coming up with explanations for where we're going to stuff people on a third or fourth floor that doesn't exist to answer our RENA numbers, for us not to get a pretty good deal out of that negotiation. I think that's super important. Now, if that's just part of the annexation at all, we get the credit for most of that, then I think that's maybe a wash, but that's something I'd be very curious about. Again, that's something that we need help in, just as much as the county does, so that's something that's important for me. Now going to something that's very basic, and again, this is just throwing out some ideas. I'd love to see this happen, I'd love to see it be within the city, but I also know that we're not necessarily having impact fees, I know there's infrastructure issues. If I play this forward, there's apartments that have a third story, I've got a fire chief that doesn't have equipment to necessarily service issues that might arise in some of the build-outs. Doesn't mean we can't solve that problem, but I do think long-term about this new development being within the city, public safety, having the equipment and the staffing and the revenue to make it all work. So anyway, I'm just raising a couple of issues that are a concern for me, and I'm also curious if the city, knowing what the numbers are in terms of affordable housing, 2,200 square foot houses, has anyone done any sort of projections on what property taxes might be in a perfect scenario, where we annex them in? And if we could get any of those types of ideas at some point, this council might be more educated to start making those long-term determinations on infrastructure and the things that I mentioned, whether it's police, fire, sewer, everything else, so. That's a lot, but take on whatever you want.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Ball through the mayor. Yes, a financial impact analysis is part of the LAFCO process, it's baked in there. LAFCO's in charge of orderly development, and one, most of, their decision includes things like orderly development, meaning who's providing the services. And so I would say it makes sense to me, and certainly this council, that it would be annexed for all the reasons you just said. It's going to be city fire responding, it's going to be city, hopefully, Councilmember Bridge, hopefully, city water, providing water to the project, et cetera. So those are things that get worked out, and we have started to consider doing that financial analysis. There's a really good consultant, Lisa Wise, out of San Luis, who does a lot of work for cities and counties, that we would tap to start preparing something like that. And if, when, of course, that occurs, we would provide a copy to the city when it was ready. So those are very good questions that do get answered. Yep.
Who currently, I mean, you have an old sewer system out there, was it all septic? Were you ever tapped into, you never tapped into the city sewer line?
Yes, there's one building. Jack Bodger for John Bodger and Sons. Yeah, there's one building on the property that is close to Olive Avenue, it's an office building, and we were allowed to tap into the sewer for that building. That's the newest building on the property. So there is that precedent.
Did you go through a LAFCO or anything like that to get that at that time, or?
No, no, it was a direct negotiation with the city.
Amazing. Well, I mean, it gets a foot in the door. What I'm getting at is, looking, what I'm trying to do is find more measurables, because those trigger things, it's just, they just did a sewer assessment for somebody down to Carpinteria, and getting somebody annexed into a district type thing. So all those things add up, and we need to make sure that, any of those little items that are out there, that we parlay on.
May I?
Yes, please.
Mayor Mosby, yeah. So the service that is provided now was an out-of-agency service agreement. So LAFCO has a handbook and a set of policies, just like the city has a municipal code, and they have a certain number of findings they need to make when they approve things. And so typically, in the, in service of protecting agriculture, when an building on an ag property needs to be serviced by a city or an urban, what they call urban services, they would do this out-of-agency service agreement for that building. So there is a precedent, there is one on this property. Again, that series of, that decision-making list that they have is very highly protective of ag, and that's why his project wouldn't have been, he wouldn't have been annexed into the sewer district at that time.
I notice one of the items, when the city went through its own RENA, argument and discussion, because we were having difficult times finding enough properties to meet our numbers, 2,200, 2,400 units, and the question was asked, paraphrasing, if we do this, does it affect our ability to annex? If we say we have enough, and then planning manager and such, they worked their tail out to try to find places, some of them, I think, were quasi questionable, when it had six housing units in the catch base and below the landfill. Unless they're houseboats, that wasn't going to work. But we did the parking lot that was approved at the Elks Lodge. That's really not going to happen, especially with the restricted covenants that nonprofits have. The Grange Hall, the Half Century Club, they were grappling any way they could so that they could meet this, so they could start a slow builder's remedy project. But then they used that against us in their argument and saying, oh, you've got plenty of land to build on, infill. So we kind of shot ourselves in the foot trying to defend ourselves from builder's remedy. But I mean, when I go through there, everything that's on this stuff with their letter, I believe there's enough ammo out there, especially with things that they're doing, and they're setting precedent in movements now, because the county has to meet RENA numbers too. So they're going other pathways now, so I think there are some significant alternatives. I don't, yes, you have something?
Sure, sure, thanks, Mayor Mosby. The, what I would say there is, as these projects come in to the county or to the city, and they were on your list, your menu of places you thought you were going to put units, when those start becoming real applications, the county in their RENA and the city in theirs needs to make no net loss findings. So if they said this property was going to have 10 units in my inventory, and it came in and only got six, then I have to say that I have four somewhere else that can compensate. So I think that in that annual reporting cycle that the agencies have to HCD, that as those move forward, we'll start to see more, potentially, that more sites need to be added, as those projections maybe don't truth out all the way. So I think there's an opportunity in the reporting cycles, in this eight-year cycle, to get there.
So let's see, what do we get on this one? So I guess we'll go ahead and take some, you guys have any questions? We get public comment, and then we'll bring it back and see what we're going to do after that? You guys get up there? Anybody else?
Yep.
All right, let's grab public comment on this one. We'll come back.
I just want to make mention, the reason why we are feeling abandoned by LAFCO is because of the poor leadership Joan Hartman has given our valley, because she's leading it. She's been the one voice who's been restricting our ability to expand reasonably, and also get the credit for the taxes that we so desperately need to run our city. So let's get rid of her.
All right, anybody else for a public comment? Hopefully, we can maybe convince Joan Hartman to come right away. All right. I'd, Councilmember Bridge, you got another question? And Ball?
I just wanted to be clear. I, I know I come across as harsh, but I am a proponent of the project. I just need to see it in the city. And I think we all want the same thing. So we just need to find ways to work together and, but I am in favor of the project.
Councilmember Ball, just a quick question. I'm not sure you have a good answer for this, and I apologize. It doesn't come across right. So I, I think I understand that you said that at the moment, the county is not necessarily taking credit or projecting to take credit for additional RENA numbers from that project. Is that accurate?
Councilmember Ball through, through the mayor. Yeah, they, in their housing element, they had an inventory of sites. And I'm trying to remember if they considered this a pending project, but it was, I, I don't think so.
And the only reason I mention that is because sometimes I'm trying to pay attention to what they're thinking about doing in other parts of the county as some sort of reference point. And I know there's been talks about possibly developing outside of Orket, Solomon Hills, big projects out there. There's been some talks in Galita and the unincorporated area. So I was just curious about, you know, any potential projects there? Are they already taking credit for some additional RENA potential and not here? And that's where I'm trying to understand, like, where might our leverage be in comparing whether we should get more credit or not?
Yeah, I think a good, a good bedtime read is the county's housing element to see what they projected or thought. You know, take your, your tea with you. It's, it's a big document.
And I guess the reason I'm saying is that, and we all know that to some extent, the county and Lompoc have this tense relationship where we hardly feel like we get to move at all. And then sometimes we learn that in other areas of the county that's unincorporated, it seems like they're a little bit more open to the idea of building and hitting those RENA numbers in some questionable areas. So anyway.
Yeah, when they went through the, Councilmember Ball, when they went through the housing rezon process, there was 35 sites throughout the county. Many of them were down on the South Coast. Because the RENA numbers were kind of split two-thirds, one-third. It was two-thirds of the housing units on the South Coast. 14,000 units needed to be absorbed by Galita, Santa Barbara, Carpentry and the county. So you hear about certain projects, and I'm gonna use one, like Glen Annie Golf Course now is being designed with almost 1,100 units on it. There's a number of different housing projects on the South Coast that are being absorbed for their RENA numbers. In the North County, it was about, including Lompoc, Salvin, Beelton, Santa Maria, it was about 1,200 units and the county. The county's responsibility was 5,400 units about. And so they identified in the Lompoc Valley two sites that possibly could be developed. And one of them was the Apollo Project in Vannett Village, and there was one other site, much smaller. This particular site was not one of the sites. Then you go into Santa Maria and Orket. Solomon Hills is next generation housing element. When they start updating that back in, what, 2031, they'll probably be looking at those numbers at that time. But they are processing an application. It'll go through the exact same process with an environmental impact report and, and, you know, move through that step. So at this point, it's, the housing element has identified all of these different sites. And that's why the Bodger Meadows Project is up for some negotiations as far as how do you count those numbers between the county and the city, because they weren't part of the housing rezon effort.
Thank you. And I just appreciate that clarification. I'm always trying to figure out how to compare or contrast other areas and how Galita might be addressing their numbers versus the county's needs. So thank you for edifying me on that. I appreciate that.
Again, it's all about jobs, housing balance, and the jobs right now are in the South Coast.
Now, don't forget, we have a lot of jobs out there, and the people aren't living here. So that balance needs to align too, which is one of the paragraphs in here that was kind of vague that they fired a shot on. And you know, where, how are you gonna balance the jobs, housing balance, if you don't have jobs? Well, we have the jobs. Go to the main gate. It's an hour wait to get through the traffic light at seven, eight o'clock in the morning. Because they're all living over there instead of living here. So question, the, the EIR in 2010, is there data and stuff they can use there to help with the SEQA that you're looking forward to doing now? I mean, they, just like we keep environmentally studying these things. And there should be a lot of info in that, that EIR on the Bailey Corridor annexation that we can use to get this through, through SEQA.
The environmental analysis for this city's general plan that started in 2010, that environmental impact report is, is a very thorough document. I've read it a couple of times in different chapters and to use for different projects. And I hope that the county would take advantage of the work that was done in 2010, because I think many of the topic areas have already been analyzed. You know, the city has not grown that much. The impacts are pretty similar to what was in 2010. But it is a city document. The county has to go through their process. And you also have things like vehicle miles traveled, greenhouse gas emissions, high fire hazard, and a couple of other new analysis that are required by SEQA. So the county's environmental analysis of this particular project will take into consideration these new standards and requirements for review. But I think they would be well-served to look at that previous EIR.
So the, I mean, knowing the county, I did go through these three times for SEQA for recreation fields. So I mean, they really love SEQUAs, for whatever reason. They like to play games on that, so best of luck with that. So one of the objects that I think that understanding that's going on here as well, if you look at historical documents, Lompoc in 1968 was to be 196,000 people. And it was anticipated the growth. You found that against your wall that showed all what it was that agriculture actually encroached on the committee of Lompoc that was trying to grow back then. So I mean, that's one of the variables that's out there. When you see the numbers they're drawing, it's also positioning because they want to keep their hold of three county supervisor seats in South County. That's why they don't want us to grow, because they don't want a minority-majority impoverished community to get a county seat. And they do everything they can to stop the potentials for us to grow. I was getting ready to make what you want, but, Councilmember Bridge?
Laurie, I just want to be kind of crystal clear. We only are going to do one SEQA, and that SEQA we've used for this metal to LAFCO. That's a yes?
Yes. And that's, we will continue to review the documents that the applicant submits, provide our comments to this, to the county. We are, once the environmental document starts moving forward, we're gonna ask for at least monthly meetings to see how things are progressing through the review so that the city's position is well represented in that environmental document. We will then be reviewing the draft EIR, and we will be providing comments on that. We will also be attending the Planning Commission meeting and the Board of Supervisors meeting if needed so that the city is well represented through this whole process.
Okay, so that was kind of a leading question. So the mayor had kind of referenced that it would be kind of nice if we got that whole strip. That's kind of how I interpreted what he said. Would there, that would require another LAFCO application, I believe. Is there an economy of scale that since we're doing the SEQA for that, that we piggyback our SEQA for the other piece at the same time?
If we focus our application to just follow the Bailey Avenue right-of-way where the sewer line is located, I would have to look at that environmental document that was generated in 2010 to see how we can use that document for that particular application.
Okay, I, I just think that we, if we're going in, you could kind of look at it as a bargaining. We want this whole thing, we'll give you this. Versus if you go in for the this, now you don't have anything to give up. So I, I think that'd be an interesting exercise to understand what it would cost us to go in for the whole hog. Thank you.
I know we're allowed to do input or direction to staff, so let me try putting some direction out here that we could come back with. We came up with some ideas and some questions out there and stuff. If making this motion that we do, make a motion that, that we direct staff to come back with some of the answers that were presented to them with questions. One, namely, like, are there creative ways that we can work with Bodger to get this project through, much like the county has done in other areas, other jurisdictions have done? So we can have a little more say, so to say in this. One, looking out as well as getting it inside the sphere of influence line, the sewer line, all the way down Bailey. Should have been in there. We own it. We should have already, I don't care. Are we even allowed to work on it? And here's a big question that we have. If we go out there, do we have to get a permission from the county to work on our own sewer line? That's in there. It's not inside our sphere of influence. But other angles that, that we've come up, up here, but allow the attorney to work with staff and such to, to come back with some of these questions, explore alternatives, and maybe be a little creative to get this project in. We know we need the housing and we, we need to get it done. So this is my motion. I got a second by Starbuck. All right, let's go ahead and vote on. No pretty colors yet. There we go. All right, that passes five zero. So we should come up with some good stuff here. Let's see what happens. All right, let's see. Moving on to written communications. City clerk, do you have any written communications?
Nothing.
All communications, your last two minutes are all communications? See nobody rise, we'll close that. Move on down to council comments and meeting reports. Oh, ah, sorry. Yeah, lucky us. Item four. Item four. Thanks, Councilmember Starbuck. I know I kept you around for a reason. Because you're good-looking. So if I can ask some general questions, this is a consent calendar item. Did you, did you have, you want to give a quick presentation on anything on that?
I did not prepare anything. I can.
It's an agendized item. Whose name's on this one?
Mine's on there.
Well, I mean, consent calendar is a normal item. This is not normal in any way, shape or form. Are we buying into some massive battery systems somewhere?
We are buying a very small percentage of a battery storage system, yes. That's the proposal. 400 megawatt system in Ratchukugamunga through the NCPA.
So we're gonna own 1%. We're gonna have three megawatts of battery storage, right?
Three megawatts, yes.
So what is the cost?
Well, it depends on, so the, we're, we're buying storage. So it's currently $12.71 a kilowatt month, or megawatt month, I'm sorry. So it's about $38,000 a month. One minute's operating for us. But that'll be offset by energy costs. So we're gonna, the, the object is to buy energy when it's cheap during the day. Buy solar energy when it's cheap and then discharge it when it's expensive. So you're gonna offset the costs.
So we're obligated for $36,000 a month for how long? 20 years?
20-year, yes.
So what's the development security of 62.5 kilowatts? What's that about? And then that increases to $125 per kilowatt on January 1st, 2028?
That's the security deposit for the, the project when they sign the agreement. It's the security deposit with the NCPA will, with their agreement with the developer.
So how much is that, how much is that for us?
NCPA uses our funds that are on reserve with them currently as the, basically like a letter of credit. There's no, it's not gonna be anything out of our pocket. It's just, it's basically like a letter of credit.
It is. It's just money they have already.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's security. So they're, we're giving security that we're not going to default. We're not gonna sign an agreement and walk away.
So how much is that then?
I did not.
62.5 kilowatts and you're getting three megawatts. So how many dollars is that for security?
We're 3% of the, or we're 1%, we're 1% of the project.
So what's the cost of the total? What I'm getting at in this thing, the reason why I ask this, is that, that's referencing dollar amounts only in a couple of places. There's no total gross dollar amount of the project. There's.
Yeah, because it's not, we're not buying, we're not paying for the construction. We're, NCPA's leasing, they're basically paying for storage. They're not, they're not buying the project. They don't own the project. They're not owning the facility. They're paying for a service once, once it's operational.
Then why are we paying, so why are we putting deposits in if we're not paying into something?
They're not, they're not transferring funds. They're having a security deposit so that the developer's not starting to build a project and NCPA walks away.
So they're using that money for collateral then?
Yes.
So if he walks away, the money can disappear?
Well, no. They're not gonna hand him the money. It's, NCPA holds the money.
It doesn't stay, it doesn't say any of that in here. What I'm getting at is it's very loose. I sat down with the city attorney today to try to go over that and try to find out what our financial obligations are. And very difficult to find out what they are. You're telling me how many kilo? So it's 12.71 cents. So you say we're only getting 3,000 kilowatt a month? Because you said $36,000 a month.
We're buying three megawatts of the storage capacity. So it's, it's all gonna depend on how many times they charge the battery, discharge the battery. We, we pay the flat fee. So it's, the cost is gonna vary depending on how many, you know, it's, it's all gonna be market-driven on how much you can purchase the power for to charge the battery and how much you sell it for when you discharge the battery. So there's, there's no way I can answer how much it's gonna cost, because I don't know what the market's gonna be.
So we're buying into a system, but we don't have any idea how much it's gonna cost?
Well, we do, we do that every day. We buy power off the market every day to power the city. So the, the goals are we're hedging our costs. So right now, we, we own portions of solar power. And during the, during the day, the market goes really low on solar. Solar is very cheap on the market. Well, that's the optimal time to store that power, when it's really cheap, into the battery system. And then when the market is high later on, when the sun's down and the evening, when power is expensive, that's when you discharge the batteries.
And it wasn't long ago, and the peak hour rate was five to nine. Now it's noon, noon to, no, it's five to nine. It used to be noon to five. Peak hour rate used to be noon to five. Now it's five to nine because people charge their cars and get home. But that, that's a man-made thing. It could change.
Yeah, the market, market varies all the time.
I just, I just can't wrap around the numbers in here. Is there, is this time-sensitive as well? Do we need to have this back at a certain time or can we get a better? I, I don't know. Is anybody else, maybe somebody else can answer me what it is. I don't, I can't follow.
Well, you two have thoroughly confused me, so if we can have a little more time to study that, I'd be open to that. Is it time-sensitive?
Well, the NCPA would like it back by sometime in September. So it's not, it doesn't need to be approved today, but they would like it back sooner. Because they cannot, you cannot get the project moving until all the. Because they cannot, they cannot get the project moving until all the participating agents.
Well, we can come back at the next session then and still meet your timeline.
Yeah, if you bring it back, the next meeting would be fine.
Councilmember Ball, you had something to add?
Sure, just a couple of quick questions just because, now again, to be clear, layman's terms, we're not building a big battery backup system here in town. This is batteries somewhere else.
This is in San Bernardino County.
San Bernardino County. And we're, we're buying a little bit of storage so that when the rates are super cheap, we can put some power there. And then when we need it, or we want to stabilize something or add resilience.
Yeah, it's, it's really not power that we're going to use. It's, it's power that's in the market. Yeah. It's really not power that we're going to use here.
Is it fair to say it's part of the game of stabilizing costs for NCPA and its members?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the only question that I'm curious about, obviously timing might matter, but in terms of whether NCPA is on the hook for its obligation or I'm curious where the city, are we just obligated to some extent to buy into this because of some state mandate? Or is this just what NCPA is suggesting that its members do?
Yeah, so, I mean, we are obligated to buy into, to have what they call resource adequacy. So basically, we have to have energy available to meet our needs all the time. So we have to have a certain percentage. So this, this helps us with that requirement. So if we have energy stored somewhere, doesn't have to be here, anywhere in our system, that's, that's ours that we own. That helps us. So it helps, it helps us there, but it also helps us in the fact that we own solar power or somewhere else. So it's going to hedge us there when we're generating this energy in some of our other assets. And it's, it's really not really making us any money. It's, it's really cheap. We can store it. And then discharge it when it's more expensive and we can actually make some funds, make some money on it.
So.
Yeah, so when we, it's, it's really as a way to hedge, hedge our, our existing assets. When we generate some, some solar, say solar energy, for example, sometimes during the day, it's, it's really inexpensive in the market. It's, it sometimes even goes negative where it's, it's negative cost. Well, you can buy that and store that off the market in a battery for negative dollars and then discharge it later when it's, you know, twenty dollars a kilowatt or a megawatt. And so you're making, you're generating income versus, you know, so the idea is it won't actually, you know, if it's managed correctly, it, overall, it won't cost the city any money. Overall. But, you know, I can't say that for certain because it's all market driven.
So if I understand correctly, the, I never get the initials right, but the N A, NCPA has initiated this project as a way for their members to play the market?
Well, it's not really to play. It's, it's, it's a requirement that we have renewable energy. But as we know, renewable energy, the major player in renewable energy is solar energy, which only happens when the sun's out. So.
The word play maybe was charged, but
Yeah.
It's a way for the organization take energy that they have on the market one way or another.
Yeah, so I mean, if you look at the, you know, I can look at it like this, you know, so the biggest, you know, if you look at the Exhibit A in the, in the agreement, it's got kind of the participating agents there. I mean, it only says three hundred kilowatts on that, that page. I think it's like the, it's like the page, page forty of the agreement. It's got the percentages of the participating agencies. It says three hundred. Currently, it's three hundred and twenty kilo megawatts of the four hundred. But you can see that Santa Clara is the biggest agency in the NCPA. And, you know, according to this, they're going to buy half of the facility. I mean, to me, that's, you know, that's, that tells me a lot, you know, they're, they want to buy as much as they can. And they're actually contemplating buying the balance of the four hundred, you know, so they're, they're actually considering buying another eighty megawatt hours. Because we can, they can get up to the four hundred once this is signed. Because we're looking at, we're just looking at buying a very small amount of this.
So I guess I just have one question. I mean, you're, you're the person, the buck stops here because you're the person in charge of this. This is a twenty-year agreement. It's kind of a long-term thing. It's a little bit speculative. You're the professional. Is this a good deal for Lompoc?
Uh, yeah, I believe it is.
Thank you.
Quick questions that can, that bother me. First of all, I don't see a total dollar value. Maybe you could give us something that, to give some example of what we're doing. I mean, if you're paying twelve dollars a kilowatt and you have responsible for what? Three megawatts? I mean, it's a.
I said, I said kilowatt, but we, we pay by the, we pay by the megawatt.
If we could get some of the numbers, but what concerns me, we're obligating the participants to take delivery of and pay for such electric capacity, energy and to pay NCPA. So we're going to pay, but we don't really even know how much we're going to be paying. We know there's a kilowatt percentage, but maybe you could put some of the numbers together so we can see what it is as an example of what it is we're doing. I mean, is it routinely, you're, you're paying so much per kilowatt hour per month at thirty-six thousand dollars, but where's the, run, run the benefit, run a scenario for us so we can see what's going on. If we're buying in and we're selling out, are we getting, getting, how does it work? I mean, you're telling us some stuff, but it's not referencing any of that in this, in this document. So that, that's my request, that you come back the next council meeting with, with some scenarios explaining how this is working to the benefit of the people. I got, I got other, other, I guess I need to.
It can, it can hurt to, to give.
I'll make that as a full, I'll make that as a full motion to come back with it.
If I can just add to that, honestly, some of the scenarios that you already mentioned right here, again, reminding us that like, there are times when it could be a negative cost and we could store that and eventually as a partner in this group who benefits from stabilizing costs, maybe just help us understand how.
Yeah, it's going to, it's going to vary all year long. It's, it's, I mean, it's going to vary in January, July. So, I mean, I can give you examples, but they're going to be all over the place. So, I mean, if you want to give me a time of year and I can run numbers for a month.
I, I think, I think what's.
But they're going to be all over the place.
I think what's going on here is there's two elements of uncertainty that I'm hearing. One, one element is, is there a scenario where we buy high and sell low? I don't think there is, but that's a question on the table that I'm hearing. And the second question I'm hearing is we are buying a piece of this project in one fashion or another. And is there a return, is there a point where that purchase price, whether it's a security deposit or whatever we're calling it, is there a point in time where we at least break even? And I believe the answer to that is yes as well. But those are the questions I'm hearing on the table that is probably buried in this document, which is, that's why I'm more than willing to take another week and read it.
Yeah.
But that's what I'm hearing is the questions.
Well, you're never going to buy high and sell low because you don't have to. You never have to buy and you never have to sell. But you do have to pay the monthly fee. So whether or not you store any energy or not, you're going to be locked into paying the monthly fee.
So I think they're looking for a scenario that shows that that monthly fee is worth what the return is going to be. Maybe that's a better way to say what I'm hearing.
Currently, this document tells us we're obligated to pay. It doesn't show us the cost benefit to the, to the people of Lompoc. But it doesn't even really tell us our total gross amount that we're going to be paying. You said thirty-six thousand a month. I've been through this document a couple of times. I don't see anywhere in this that it's thirty-six thousand a month. But if you could give us the scenarios and, and show us some of the things we've talked about, here's what Councilmember, I'll make this as my motion. I can get a motion that you bring it back next time, showing some of the questions, answering some of the questions we presented you with tonight, aligning with what I said, Councilmember Bridge said, and suggestions such as Councilmember Ball said. I can get a second on that to bring this back at next meeting.
I'll give you, I'll give you a second. I just want to make sure that you don't, you're not going home ripping your hair out about any of this.
You're mean, you're mean.
That already happened. There's still, there's a lot here. But my whole point is like, look, we, let us read between the lines a little bit. We know there's going to be variability. We know the market's going to go like this and it's hard to project everything. But maybe just scenarios like, okay, it's fair enough. There's a certain amount of outgoing. There should be an easier way to explain a benefit in general to the city. Now, it may not be exactly monetary at first, but at least we can understand as a partner, we're headed in the right direction over ten, twenty years. This helps stabilize our costs or keeps our rates down. There should just be an easier way to explain it. Now, I'm not looking for you to tell me what's going to happen next August in twenty twenty-seven. What's the rate's going to be? We know that. We have no idea. But we shouldn't be making this decision to be a partner in NCPA just because all of the other member cities do it. They should be penciling out something that works for them. And it sounds like a few of them really are because they're going big on it. So for me, it's like, well, if we're only doing three percent, there should be a good argument for that. Maybe there's an argument for more. But maybe that's a little bit of guidance. I'm not looking for specific numbers that you can't come up with. Just want to know it's a healthy and wise decision for us.
Sure, you got a second?
Second.
Alright, first a second, let's go ahead and vote. That passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Lou. Alright, now we're moving on to, where are we now? Councilmember Starbuck, you have a minute? Where are we now? Council comments and meeting reports, is that everyone, you got any?
No reports.
Councilmember Ball?
No reports.
Councilmember Vega?
No reports.
Councilmember Bridge?
I don't have reports, but I do have a council request. I would like item nine on the upcoming agenda items, which is discussion of the city council handbook update. I'd like to kill that if we can at the next session. I've put my comments in. You guys can put whatever comments you want so we can get it off the list. Could we have that at the next?
Can we get a head nod? Do we need a motion through that?
Oh, I'll repeat it. I'd like to bring back item nine in the upcoming agenda items. It's discussion of the city council handbook. It's an open issue. There's no date on it. I did submit all my comments to Stacy and Dean. And I'd like to see that come back at the next session so we can get it off this list.
Are we good? Do we need to follow through with two other head nods or what do you guys want? City Attorney?
If you want to give that direction, it would require two other votes, yes, but I, I would want to make sure that staff has the ability to do that. I don't know if staff has the ability to do that.
Do we need to put a qualifier in there? Are we, I was looking at the city manager. You okay? Or you're looking at it? What are you doing?
That's what you told me to do last time.
Yeah, but I'm not sure, I haven't answered this question. Isn't it something that?
You're looking for general conversation? You're looking for, is that what you're looking for?
I have, I put specific comments in and yeah, we'll address them and kill this. You'll either agree with them or not.
If, if that, the next meeting, then the meeting after, would that be okay?
No, I think what you're requesting is you have some comments and you want to discuss them with the council. That's the direction, right? Yes.
Well, well, wait a minute. I want to make sure what you just said because so last, I think three sessions ago, this was brought up and we didn't, we all got confused. And then I met with Stacy and she said, look, why doesn't somebody just put in the comments that they want in this? And then we'll bring it back. I submitted my comments and put them to you guys. There's, I don't know, five different things in there and now I'm trying to bring it back so we can close it. And the decision that would be made would be to either include what I suggested or it won't pass. And then we'll be done with it. We don't need to have two meetings for this, do we?
Well, it depends on if the comments that you made are the precise language that you want to be added or they're just the ideas of what you want to be adding. So if they're just the ideas, we can bring that back for council to consider and discuss and then direct us to come up with the precise language, which would be at a following meeting.
I gave you the precise language.
Okay, then it seems like that could be brought back at the next meeting for possible adoption.
Alright. Do I have concurrence? Get a couple of head nods?
I'll give you a head nod. You got a head nod? You want us to vote on it? Are you all right with three head nods? Alright, I got one. Councilmember Starbuck. Okay, anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
I've got a couple items here. I did go to the LAFCO meeting representing City of Lompoc. But I'm looking at bringing back the grant agreement resolution for the charging station on one hundred block on North H, possibly alternative direction. I did talk with APCD head today and to bring it back for discussion to see with possibly, as you guys have been listening, without getting into discussion on it, the hospital is, is needing parking and this new electrification requirement is very expensive and overwhelming. But be able to bring this item back for discussion at maybe a meeting within a month, just a year, just. That would be the resolution six, 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 nine, parentheses, twenty-four. The grant agreement to review and the staff report that was presented to us, the council at that time of June eighth, twenty twenty-four. Bring it back to see if there's a better site or alternative or continue on. Maybe in the next, sometime within the next month. Two meetings from now. Good? Anybody else? You have, you got a second?
I think it's a great idea, but let's talk about it if you want.
Okay, so we've got Councilmember Bridge and Councilmember Ball on that. And then I've got.
What date is that?
You got two meetings. I don't have the date, but it is two meetings from now. Either, either the next meeting or the following meeting after that.
The second meeting in September?
Sure. The next thing I have is, so you're going to bring back a discussion on SoCal gas. So, uh, can you give us a presentation on the towing service agreement? And how that is established? Um, and maybe if you could give us a presentation on that, we can make a decision whether to take action on it or what. The city manager?
I'm sorry, I'm thinking about how to present that.
Where are we? The towing service agreement that we have.
What about the franchise agreement, right?
No, you're, you're bringing the gas company thing back already. You already.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm confused.
Towing service agreement.
Oh, towing, okay, yes, I'm sorry.
Vehicles, we, we, City of Lompoc working with tow companies and we contract them to take vehicles off the street.
Yeah, I got you now.
Okay, can you bring a presentation on that?
Yeah, we can bring.
Put it on your list. You can figure out when. I mean, it's, you know.
We get two other votes on that.
Do I need two other people? Want to hear about the towing service agreement, how we work with tow companies to have vehicles yanked off the street?
Will those include motor homes, trailers? Sure.
Okay, anybody else? I got Councilmember Starbuck and Councilmember Bridge on that. Here's another item that I think is important. We just went through this on the budgetary item. But I think it'd be very important, we kind of glossed over it, it was glossed over it. And I think it's very significant that we should all understand what's going on. And it's, they called it many different names from pilot to franchise to a lot of different things. This is the rate of return formula that staff use. It's, it's pretty surprising how that came about. But I think it should be presented. All councils should understand the rate of return formula that we're charging a franchise fee or payment of lieu of tax fee to the electric enterprise. What's that? No, no, they call it the rate of return. Rate of return formula. I think that the councils should see it. It was glossed upon and we were told if we wanted more. It was glossed upon, and we were told if we wanted more information, to go back and talk to Mr. Cross to get the answer. But I think the whole council should see what it is and see how it's calculated and such. Did I get two other head nods to go with that one? I got a Councilmember Bridge and a Councilmember Starbucks. All right? And with that, that's just a presentation on that one for the city manager, it should With that, we'll adjourn the meeting until six thirty PM, September second, 2025. What's up? Seventeen is a quick answer.